I'll eventually get back into like daily heart work sessions. If as long as I can um but right now I just wanted to talk a talk a little bit about. All the ways that I've just been wrecked internally externally just. So we're gonna talk about all of these abuses. First is the manipulation and betrayal. And I did touch on that a little bit before and I got super angry on the road. I got halfway through this and that's that's all I could get. But I really focus right now. The emotional manipulation and manipulated my emotions. Making me question my own sanity and my reality. What I'm actually faced up with. They gaslit me repeatedly denying their actions and twisting reality to make. Me doubt the perceptions that I have of my own memories of my reality. Light on coffee pot on. Feeling like there's missing coffee. Just stuff taken out of my fridge like you know and I just anything. Anything much of anything in my life has been. To to completely take and make these false promises. Making commitments and promising me. That. They would never do these kinds of things and they were never promises that had been made intended to keep. Leading me. Leading me on and. Uh opening up my availability to trust again. Just to push me back down. It's a covert operation I feel that's been engaged in secretive behaviors behind my back. Planning plotting scheming behind my back to carry out actions real actions. Real poisons intended to harm me without my knowledge about them until it became. My knowledge and then when it was my knowledge and I was like placating back on that. Word salad that they were using. Then all of a sudden it was like all knives came out and it was really scary. I mean it gets so psychologically manipulative. That it just it breaks you down to the point where like you're not yourself. Nor can you even think rational thought. Processing sometimes because it's like you're just. You're being lopped off in that way that. These people don't give a fuck about you man. People don't give a fuck about you if they were to give a fuck about you they wouldn't have it and I'm gonna do this in the first place. And then leading it to leading it into like a complete sexual deviancy. That's just beyond beyond okay. Like gee you're not gonna get away with this I'm like wholeheartedly like. Ready to come snap you up out of your fucking house and drag you down to the fucking police station. If these police don't go and arrest you. I I I don't know they're not protecting you then. And I'm not protected from you until you get dealt with. So that's my truth. That is my truth because there's no way that I should have this feeling and sound in my voice like. Oh like that voice dropped way way down into my body. Type of feel and then uh. Just that slowing down of my heart I I know for a fact that that was nothing else other than what you what you guys had done to me. Something I don't know what were you giving me arsenic? Like is that why they I created that song like my brain can't drink like my brain feels like it has nothing to drink. And that to me with a study that I recently did fuck sounds a lot to me like I was being given arsenic. So if that's the case I'm lucky to fucking be here. If that's the real case I'm fucking lucky to be breathing. I'm lucky to be breathing anyway I don't know what the fuck they did I don't know what the fuck they've all been doing. And plotting and scheming and fucking wanting to remove me from the earth. Gee fell in love with my girl that's what he did. He fell in love with the idea of and fucking did this shit. Until even that fucking morning I woke up I woke up from hearing that that piece on the. Bottom side of the chair that they're fucking on fall to the floor that's what woke me up and motherfuckers lucky I didn't fucking. Wake up two minutes two seconds earlier or move faster. Upon waking up because I hadn't gotten I I knew the night before I knew. Somehow I fucking knew I did not want to fucking even go to sleep that night. Knowing and reading her fucking face falling asleep like that on me no that wasn't her. That wasn't her. That was you. That was you my nig. So anyway. Ah so here I go off course already again. Um. The mind games constantly playing with my mind leading me to confusion anxiety and self doubt. Not to mention that anxiety feeling. Was induced also through poisoning I believe because it wasn't anxiety. It was legitimately my heart going but a little fucking crazy. Just like oh fuck here we go. Am I gonna die? You know and then on top of that they're isolating you. From friends family support systems any way that they can increase. Uh their control over you by power of assertion even. I mean word salad while I'm fucking sleeping bitch. Waking up to you fucking being like oh people want you dead. And all whatever I don't fucking care. All I know is all I know is I woke up and I heard I heard. I heard who I love very dearly speaking something very ill into my head. And I felt like I had died. I woke up that morning feeling like I had died I wanted to grab that bitch's face. And be like what the fuck who the fuck are you bitch? Who the fuck are you bitch? Anyway so then it's an erosion of my self worth breaking down my self confidence my self esteem. Making me feel completely worthless and powerless like as far as any kind of assertion goes. I feel like a targeted individual well that could have been made by design by this motherfucker. And sure and ensnare my heart. To think that there's no one out here in this legal system that can actually help me. Even if there was see what I mean? So it's to isolate me from the idea smearing that idea out of my mind completely. So then there's public smearing. Obviously. Spreading false and misleading information about me to damage me in any way. Um I think there is a deliberate attack on my career ability my workmanship my ability to thrive in life in that way. I feel like I've been blacklisted I've applied it when I was homeless I applied at nearly fifty places had like. Ten fifteen interviews had even job offers where like the next day I'd be going in and they'd be denying me. To 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 have a job well what's the reason I have rights here to know what the actual reasons are. And not any one of these times that I've asked for reasons could they give me reason? And so I feel like there has been a. Smear campaign basically to set up to financially destroy me on the covert level of. Just make it impossible for this man to even get a regular fucking job. Because I know in the timely as to fashions that if I was protected in ways of being able to just have my own income my own availability to the. To the workmanship and the and the hard work that and hard work hard work and hard labor that I'm willing to put in. And that I don't have these attacks happening to me oh yeah I'd be I'd probably be still sitting there fucking running the mills. Or I'd be still sitting there doing something. Not dealing with this bullshit. Day in and day out as if these motherfuckers needed me dead. And now they do they do they need me dead because with everything that I have. I I I'm sure as shit that I got enough proof to fucking sink these motherfuckers for life in prison life. 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 I even think back to back life sentences. You enough as where if my fucking G is concerned you wanna fucking take someone who is already broken. Utilize them to fucking convert your own act activity against me? Okay. We'll just see how well this pans out for you gee. And me I don't really care. My life I've already been dead. For fucking years fighting this shit coming up from homelessness all to discover this. I'm sorry but this man's lucky I don't fucking waltz over there and fucking knock his bitch ass out. It's sabotaging me and my reality to make money. It's sabotaging me and my reality to have relationships and to tell you the truth my son just recently reached out to me. And there is some deliberate attacks there I believe that I don't think the whole truth and nothing but the truth is out. I really don't. I believe wholeheartedly that my son coming back into my life or being a part of my life. Would have been an absolute threat to this man. Absolutely. And so I don't know the truth there and I hope I'm wrong. I'm ho- I'm I hope I'm wrong. But I I wholeheartedly feel like there could have been money paid somewhere to somebody to make something happen. To just fucking push that motherfucker to detriment. The same way that they that has been done to me in my life. And it's just it's a it's it's a malign targeted way to really fucking fuck me. Do you see what I'm saying? Everything that this man is known with me trying to fight. To 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 just make it out of this kind of fucking shit that he's known about. That he's known about that it's been him. What a piece of shit what a fucking piece of shit. That's all I can say if I if I find out that that's the case. And that you had anything to do with my fucking son being in the situation that he's in today. There's any fucking bribery money anything any fucking thing motherfucker. I don't even have to say it. I don't even have to say it. You will be dealt with. If that's the case. I I already think you should be dealt with. Minus minus that. Minus a few other things. Shit minus this whole fucking relationship with where you moved before in my life. Where you moved before in my life. Fucking push around a motherfucker in his own fucking life. Shove a motherfucker down. When he's already fucking down. I'm just that close from coming up and you're gonna fucking be like that with me after every fucking thing that I've done. Here I here I go again bouts of anger and rage that I have no fucking control over at times. So there's the covert sabotage and stalking the hacking and surveillance of me illegally accessing my personal information. Monitoring me monitoring my communications hacking my accounts making it making it impossible for me. Next to impossible for me to even get into this house. Using my data to further manipulate me and harm me stalking me following me monitoring my movements and creating constant sense of being watched and controlled. With absolution aim to where you two wanted to move with your newfound glorious fucking newfound fucked up love lives. You fucking sexual deviant motherfuckers that need to fucking oh you wanna remove me? You wanna remove me? Hey bitch if you needed to remove me you shouldn't have done it covertly I should have just fucking got a damn gun your damn self. You dumb bitch. Cause this shit is fucking bullshit sabotaging my daily life interfering with my daily routines and activities making it. Making it difficult for me to function normal in any any kind of day any day. Spreading lies creating false narratives about me to distort how others may perceive me leaving me defenseless against any other. Form of attacks against me from other people. Or from other areas of my life other areas I don't even know about how about that? Spiritual and emotional destruction spiritual warfare attacks against my beliefs my faith my spirituality. Things that even brought to him my morality telling him how I wanted things to be how I. You know how I I wouldn't be happy about you know certain things you knew. You knew all of the detriment and the purpose that you had behind. Throwing my inner strength down throwing any kind of purpose driven mentality that I had in any kind of work that I had in workmanship. To 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 go on in and then it was all just to push me into this whole like the real world like. I think that was a full fledged attack against me because as soon as I started doing the doing the parts within the real world all of a sudden. Y'all are I'm like just going rollerblading. Y'all are coming back here fuck. Or whatever you're doing. Wherever you are. I'm getting the call from her playing word salad acting like I'm out. I'm out doing what what she's doing. Fucking my mind completely you can hear the fucking wind in the background you dumb bitch. You know exactly what I'm fucking doing I'm rollerblading I'm on fucking rollerblades. I think I even fucking sent her a fucking picture but it just goes to show how fucking utterly destructive it is. Of their behaviors to be pushed upon me. To where it's like oh it makes you question your own reality as far as like oh maybe I can do something to help. There's nothing you can do to help these people are fucking trying to kill you. Fucking people want you dead. They don't want you around. And they're being clear plain as day about it because they think with that word she thought with that word salad in my fucking. Ear ear like I'd wake up the next day and just go fuck commit suicide. I believe wholeheartedly that that was her goal. With that word salad waking up fucking to just. Uh psychological fucking manipulation or psychological fucking. Real constructive thought processes adding into somebody's sleep. Into their fucking sleep R E M sleep or if I even was there. You're fucking up my whole reality my whole dream life my fucking ability to rest. To wake up feeling rested you know how I woke up I had woken up feeling like I had died like eight times over. It was hard as fuck to get up. With what you were doing to me bitch and you know you were fucking doing it to me. You know and God knows too. So I don't care this kind of spiritual warfare is bullshit. It's the spiritual and emotional destruction emotionally drains you sucking the life out of you by constantly demanding your attention and energy and emotions into values that you wouldn't have otherwise been giving your. Time emotion and value into. Destroying hope making you feel hopeless helpless as if there is no way out of the situation created and I did I felt like there is any fucking way out. I still don't. I still don't. Because even though they're gone my life is ruined my mind has been ruined they fucking poisoned me they did saying things to me that my own. Uh availability of my own self is gone. Or however you wanna say that the availability that I have to my own self to my own my own workmanship my own drive my own. Energy my own everything is just fucking gone. Breaking my spirit systematically breaking me down my resilience hope. And my own will to fight back. Leaving me vulnerable to their continued abuse all the time. And then I and then I was just depressed and just like what do I do? What do I do you're you don't have like where you like I talked to you you don't have to prove these things. Okay? The money it takes to even fucking do that. How about that that's not financially abusive while I'm like grinding trying to grind through this fucking. Real real sabotage type pain like it's just worse and it goes a little bit darker than just narcissistic behavior. When it entails murdering you. Yeah and especially when it's coming from your own friend and especially a few days later you're driving to go to work and you see his. Van door open and he and you're like the fuck that's him pointing a gun at me. And I just thought to myself there ain't no way that motherfucker can pull the trigger. Everything I got online they would snatch him up so fucking quick. But. You're dumb for pointing the motherfucker at me. And this is my reason. You're dumb for pointing it at me because you left me in a mind I don't wanna be. You left me in a mind that you don't want me to be in. So while it's difficult the long term impact is just it it's there. The post traumatic stress leaving me in deep emotional scars and ongoing trauma that affects my ability to trust and feel safe in my own reality. I don't. I don't feel safe in my own reality I have a sticker over my fucking. Uh. Camera on my computer I've even stuck stickers right there. I don't wanna be watched by someone that can hack me and especially not coming from a friend. Someone that's supposed to be my friend you wanna fucking hack and align somebody go hack and align some regular average person. You don't get to do it someone fucking cares about you. Someone that actually was taking their values to the Lord about you. In that way. You're not gonna get away with it. It's difficult. Just moving on making it hard for me to rebuild my life what life? Find peace or move forward due to the the deep and lasting impact of their actions yeah. They're lasting alright. I mean just yesterday coming home I'm like am I gonna fucking make it? I'm literally like I'm going through things man and I know that if I take the time to go to the hospital I don't have a home. I won't have a home to come back to and I don't think that that's very fair neither. So I'm fighting through like. Saying to God if you're gonna take me I has nothing I can do about it but protect me. Keep me. In it in it of it all if I have to fuck feel like I'm dying through it all. Keep me. Make something. Make something. Miraculous Lord. Through this pain through this 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 whatever's going on in my life I want it to just bust out wide open in the world. And so. I don't know it's a psychological assault against me. It's caused me to lose touch with who I am. What I stand for. What I wanted in my own life the perceptions I had of my own reality diminished. And then it's just like this forced transformation. Like I'm trying to transform people's hearts with heart work. Because I believe that wholeheartedly people need to do a lot of inner searching and inner work. To get us as humanity out from these places that we're in and if we're not willing to do that kind of inner work that channeling work we're fucked. We're fucked I mean. I don't know they pushed me into detriment where the situations. I was put in I had to change I had to adapt. Or transform my thought process and my ability to like reason that they cared about me. At all. Just to survive and then I had to like utilize that thought process to like. Oh it's just so mind fucking you guys you have to like actually act like you really really care. And that you don't know these things you're not on to them about any of it. You have to act and play back as if like. The fucking attacks against you are you're not seeing. When you are seeing them. So you can specifically. You know record and write what's going on in your life. And it's hard to do it's hard to do. It's just it that's the biggest part right there. It's often at such a great personal cost it says. Just to survive. Just to be put in that survival mode. It's a great personal cost. On me with what I have to do not only just financially the abuse financially I just out of that too but not only financially but. The personal cost on me. My own heart. My own abilities. My own love. My own prayers. My own me. My own me. So um. I guess with that being said I can I can see where people take it to those extremes. Cause. I'm wiped out of myself and I'm really trying here. I'm really fighting hard you guys. And I don't think that people see it as like. You're just fighting to live. As they see it as I'm fighting to lie or some shit. It's just not that way. It isn't. Either way. I'm still standing. And I don't think that these people thought that I would be standing today. And I think it really really hurts them that I am. And so I'm praying that I can continue to keep standing. Because. It's not me that deserves to go down in the ways that I have holding on to my fucking self for dear life. No. I deserve this. So anyway this is just a portion I'm sure of of a lot of ways I feel ruined. But I just feel so ruined. And uh I feel wholeheartedly that my reason to come on here out online is very legal. It's about legal matters in my life to be taken. Into this into the extremes where they need to be taken because. Because he's not gonna get away with this. Okay? And I feel sorry to the families of and all that neither one of them should get away with it. Um. I mean I just I I think a lot about her daughter going to school she's going to law school. She's a very forthright and forthright person and you could just tell by how she carries herself with. A multitude of things that she's doing in her life. And then. Not to mention like her sons have been real sad and just seemingly like what happened? Something happened with the young young one there. Like he was really really sad. Like really really tore apart about something I don't know. I just felt bad for him and I just really wanted him to know that he could have someone to talk to. Just to talk to just to be an ear if he needed somebody to talk to. You know what I mean? Cause oftentimes. I don't know I've been that I've I've been thirteen twelve eight. You know I've been in places where I felt like I didn't have anyone to talk to and I did. I did have someone to talk to. It's just hard you know what I mean it's hard it's hard to take it there. And I get that and so anyway with what I was saying before is like her daughter's going to law school. And I just think about all of this stuff going on. I mean she legit she legit legit just screwed. Just screwed her 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 own daughters is brains the fuck up. She's going to law school bitch you're gonna really do this shit while your own daughter's going to law school I believe that that was like. An enactment or like however you wanna say it like it was. or like however you wanna say it like it was played on as if nothing can happen to me because my daughter is going to school for law and I'm all hoity-toity and well protected right oh and and my own G with this thick dick he's got it all in control right he's such a smart man you know what I bet I bet whatever he did to me if it were to be found out about I think that there would be police holding this man down for me in twenty twenty four